Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wessinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move to approval of the Journal of the Meeting of May 1st, 2018.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to suspend the rules to present a proclamation to the In Honor of the Corrections Officers Week.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I read the proclamation, Mr. Chair?
Please read.
Proclamation, St. Louis County, Missouri, whereas the St. Louis County Department of Justice Services fosters a well-trained, highly professional staff that gives inmates the opportunity to improve their behavior and lifestyle so they can successfully return to the community, and whereas the correctional officers and employees who work at the Department of Justice Services are dedicated to assuring the safety and well-being of those in their care, and whereas Department of Justice Services correctional officers often act as communicators and experts in crisis management while working to resolve conflicts, sometimes needing to intervene to prevent an inmate's suicide or otherwise putting themselves in harm's way to stop an assault or break up a fight, and whereas in every part of the incarceration process, from intake to release, correctional officers and employees are dedicated to completing their tasks according to the professional guidelines set forth by the American Correctional Association, and whereas the approximately 350 honorable men and women of this criminal justice process are valued, hardworking, and committed public servants who use their expertise to focus on quality of life and safety for the community, now therefore I, Stephen V. Stanger, St. Louis County Executive, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through May 12th, 2018, as National Corrections Officers and Employees Week in St. Louis County, Missouri.
Thank you.
Mr. Travaly, we have some representatives to help forward and accept the proclamation.
Thanks. Yeah, you want to go down there?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Captain Perry, I'm Susan Junior Howard, I'm the Justice Center. Captain Perry is going to give a few words in high recognition.
Could I ask you to pull the microphone a little closer? Thank you.
Thank you. To St. Louis County Executive Steve Stanger, to the members of the St. Louis County Council, and the fellow citizens of St. Louis County, on behalf of our Employee of the Year, Officer Glenn Taylor and my fellow correction staff, I am truly honored to stand here and accept the proclamation for Corrections Officers Week. This job that we have undertaken as corrections professionals is one that is sometimes demanding and stressful, however, with vigilance and dedication, the job can get done. I'm quoting from Bible verse, Matthew, Chapter 5, verse 16 states, "Let your lights slow shine before men, that they may see your good works." We as correctional professionals do this on a daily basis. Our primary job is to maintain security, custody, and control of the inmate population. This includes monitoring inmate activities from work details, exercising, eating, and showering. We sometimes have to search inmates and their cells for weapons or contraband. We also routinely inspect locks, windows, cell doors for signs of tampering. We also try and settle disputes between inmates before a physical altercation erupts. We also keep a daily activity of all inmate activities. This is done 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Before the direct supervision concept was implemented, the corrections officer had to work in the linear method of running the facility. I was blessed to work during this time. There was no way for the correction staff to monitor inmates except through the bars of the cell. There was no use of force deterrents such as pepper spray or tasers. We as correction staff had to physically separate inmates that were in a confrontation with one another. Our uniforms during that time did not have badges, patches, insignias. We had name tags that had our pictures and names displayed. When civilians in the community passed us, they thought that we were metro bus drivers. So, we as correctional professionals have come a long way from the 70s until this present day. Again, I would like to thank the St. Louis County Executive Steve Stanger, the members of St. Louis County Council, and the citizens of St. Louis County for allowing us to give this proclamation speech. Thank you, and may God bless.
We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, erosion bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under Other Communications, Item Number 1, 3rd District, receive and file.
So ordered.
Item Number 2.
Receive and file, and that will be the order, and everyone should have gotten the updated annual valuation report.
Item Number 3, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation with the contingencies as outlined in the CVC resolution, and that will be the order.
Item Number 4, all districts.
Receive and file, same motion through item number 5, and that will be the order.
Item Number 6, 6th District.
See file, and the deposit agreement and subdivision plan be approved as recommended, please.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 7, 3rd District, receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 8, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the deposit agreement and subdivision plan be approved as recommended.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 9, 4th District.
Actually, I need to hold, there's a couple of, there's other language that I would like them to add to this resolution, so I'm going to hold it.
Okay, so ordered.
Item Number 10, 6th District.
See file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Item Number 11, 2nd District.
So ordered, I mean, same motion as previous, so ordered.
Item Number 12, 5th District.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item Number 13, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
No add-ons this evening, Mr. Chair.
Report the county executive, the report, public forum.
We have 11 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Please come to the podium when your name is announced, and give us your name and address for the record. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Our first speaker this evening is Dan Manning. Mr. Chair, can I ask Mr. Manning to pull the microphone toward him? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Chair, my name is Dan Manning, 16090 Swingley Ridge Road, Suite 620, Chesterfield, Missouri. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Partridge Farms Estates subdivision to express its opposition to PC 02-18, a zoning matter in the 6th District that was received by council on April 24th. At that time, I also expressed the subdivision's opposition to the petition as well. Again, while this matter was before the Planning Commission, there were petitions with 119 homeowner signatures delivered to the Planning Commission and planning staff opposing the project, and those concerns were ignored by the Planning Commission. I'll just once again repeat the concerns that the residents have with respect to this project. The first is the height of the building shown on the plan. The plan shows four stories. That's too tall. Four stories is much taller than the current structure that's in place there, and all the surrounding development is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, particularly the nearby homes. Second primary concern are the uses that are being requested, and regarding those uses, I'd like to quote the 6th District Community Area Study, which has been adopted by council and reads as follows, "Commercial development should be oriented primarily to the needs of the surrounding residential community, and it should not result in excessive volumes of traffic or peak flows on Lee May Ferry Road." One of the uses requested is truck and trailer rental, which is a high-intensity use. This will almost certainly lead to excess traffic on Lee May Ferry due to inexperienced drivers operating large unwieldy trucks and trailers on Lee May Ferry, and this poses a safety risk to traffic commuting down Lee May Ferry Road and to the nearby residents. It will also almost certainly lead to unsightly clutter on the site and be an eyesore due to trailers and trucks being parked all over the site. Finally, there are at least eight self-storage facilities in the immediate vicinity of this site, and to that end, the surrounding community does not need another self-storage community, nor does it want another self-storage facility. So in conclusion, the residents of Partridge Farms Estates are opposed to PC 02-18. We hope the council will be sensitive to the residents' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Next speaker is Shirley Shaper.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. My name is Shirley Shaper. I'm a resident of Partridge Farms Estates, 4553 Blairmore Terrace. This is off Longview Drive and across from Show Me Lanes in South County. As I mentioned two weeks ago here at the council, and as you know, the County Planning Commission approved the development of a four-story U-Haul structure at Show Me Lanes, even though at the Planning Commission meeting right before this approval, people had expressed legitimate concerns and problems that this building would impose. So again, this issue was brought to your attention here at the council. At that meeting on April 24th, several residents of the area and an attorney who just spoke, representing Partridge Farms, showed their disapproval and reasons for this development not to take place. But I'm asking, if there was so much disapproval shown, why then shortly afterwards was Show Me Lanes sold to U-Haul? As if actual facts that were stated at the meeting were not taken seriously. There were over 100 signatures, as the previous speaker just pointed out, collected from people who knew about this business proposal, and did not want this overpowering industrial structure, plus other concerns that it would bring, encroach upon our neighborhood. This list of names was given to the county council, and there would be many names added to the list if people realized how this would really impact their lives and the lives of their loved ones. The proposed four-story U-Haul building would definitely be overpowering and very uncomplimentary to our homes and community. It might very well be asked then, would this area actually attract potential homebuyers? Remember, according to the zoning law, there should be a healthy mixture of commercial and residential in this area. Buildings should be no more than two stories tall. Now, as I pointed out the last time, there are definitely major traffic and accident concerns in this area. Recently, getting into a turning lane to enter our subdivision, my son could have easily collided with a car entering the same lane from Snow Pro and going in the opposite direction. This is not called Suicide Lane for nothing. Think what this would be involving amateur truck drivers renting U-Haul trucks. Because of the 45 mile per hour speed limit, two blind curves and inexperienced truck drivers, sometimes with trailers attached, getting on and off Lee May Ferry is very dangerous. By the way, please drive this yourselves and see what I mean. Neighbors who live up the hill from Lee May Ferry Road and across from Show Me Lanes have seen many accidents, including fatalities, take place in what you might say their own backyard. To wrap this up, please listen to what we in the community are saying. You represent us. There are many concerns from others also. I've only mentioned two, but very significant reasons why a four-story U-Haul should not be built in this area. First, this overpowering structure is not neighborhood-friendly, following the guidelines originally set down for the county development. But second, and most important, the potential for serious traffic accidents and injuries couldn't be greater. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Next speaker is Azora Leggins.
We're going to ask if you can hold your applause. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Azora.
My name is Azora Leggins, 5320 Bermuda Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63121. Good evening. For the last few years, I have come before this council seeking help, getting information regarding my disability benefits. I would like to thank the council for the role they have played in helping me to get information. Over the last 20 years, I have been faced with many roadblocks. I am standing before you today to express my concerns regarding my newest roadblock, the prosecuting attorney's office, and the mishandling of valid criminal charges I filed against Mark M. Harris and the Boeing Company. Mr. McCullough's assistant, Edward McGee, took my information and later informed me that the prosecuting attorney, David Truman, had reviewed my information and made a decision. Mr. McGee refuses to give me contact information to Mr. Truman. Representative Courtney Curtis requested to meet with the prosecuting attorney on this matter. His request has gone ignored. Councilwoman Gray requested to meet with this problem in conditions that she was granted a possible meeting with conditions that I would not be present. How could the prosecuting attorney's office hold a productive meeting without me being present? Executive Singer, clearly, this would not be a way to bridge our divide. My charges have not been processed to an authorized conclusion, and Mr. McGee has denied me access to the prosecuting attorney who reviewed the matter. I have been ignored by the prosecuting attorney's office for no apparent reason. I am concerned that myself and all other county citizens similarly situated will be denied a proper intake and investigation, which is a clear violation of our due process and equal protection rights as set out in both the United States and the Missouri Constitution. My situation needs explanation and clarification. To echo the lady last week regarding the possible improper behavior of the prosecuting attorney's office, I request that the council allow or invite prosecuting attorney McCullough into the next meeting to answer the following questions. Why didn't Mr. McGee block me from talking with the investigator who handled my investigation? Why is Mr. McGee so, his behavior is so hostile toward me? What type of investigation was done? Who was questioned? Was a file generated? What is the standard intake process? I had a conversation with Mr. McCullough at the latter part of last year, and I expressed my needs to file criminal charges regarding a company for fraud. In that conversation, I also expressed my concerns about minority communities and their inability to get complaints and charges filed in the appropriate office and manner.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Can you wrap up?
Yeah, I can wrap it up. Regarding my situation, Mr. McCullough suggested I start in the city where the company is located. I filed in burple. The prosecuting attorney has a duty to explain his actions. The decision without any due process is troubling presidents and should not be allowed to proceed without explanation. Mr. McCullough owes the council and the county residents answers to these questions. I gave a laundry list of charges, and none have been taken serious. I have been asked for additional proof when Boeing or Mr. Harris have provided nothing. I request that the prosecuting attorney's office revisit my charges and process them in an authorized conclusion. Furthermore, it is inappropriate for communications to be sent to the prosecuting attorney's office and not be given timely responses. The prosecuting attorney's web state clearly states, Mr. McCullough's number one priority is always to the victims of crime, whether it's incarceration or restitution. He compels criminals to pay their debt to society and to the victims, and I hope he holds true with any white-collar crime. Thank you.
Thanks, Azora.
Next speaker is Kevin Barry.
Hi, good evening. Kevin Barry, I live in Afton. I'm here to talk about the Tower T thing and the houses they want to build by McBride. And I'm not going to talk about, a lot of things people talk about with the loss of green space because it is beautiful down there, and the animals. I hear there's wild turkey and deer. I've never seen them, but I hear that. I don't want to talk about the water runoff problems that housing can cause. I really don't understand that very much. And the traffic too, I don't know how that's going to work. But what I want to mention is, I just moved here from San Diego, been out there for 30 years, and when I saw Tower T, I thought, wow, what a beautiful thing to have in the community. I saw the kids, the adults there, and somebody said, well, they're going to tear it down and put houses up there. I said, oh, they would never do that. They wouldn't allow that to happen. So I guess it is going to happen, so from what I understand. So I would recommend that, I mean, if you go by there on any nice weather day, and just like, I went by the last Saturday, I couldn't believe the kids, how many kids were there. I don't know how many, it was unbelievable. But any nice weather day, there's just so many kids, elderly people, retired people, and then your average Joe is going to go out there and just let off steam hitting a golf ball. It's just, you got to, you know, miniature golf, you got the driving range, batting cages, and a little golf course. I said, man, that's just absolute treasure for the community to have that. And I know people need houses, but boy, it's not just an empty hunk of land that you're going to put some houses on. It's a loss of something very valuable for the community. So, you know, I'd advise you guys, I'd like to ask you to go by there sometime, just get the feel of the place, and see the energy and the beautiful thing that's going on down there with, any nice weather day. I mean, what an asset to the community that place is, and it would be an absolute shame if they allowed that to go away. It's a real value to the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next speaker is Stephen Lax.
Members of the council, good evening. My name is Steve Loetz. I'm the owner of Tower T Corporation. I'm a PGA professional. My wife Janice and I are here tonight to, because we think it's important for us to bring clarity to our thoughts about Tower T into a public forum. I first set foot on the place we call Tower T when I was nine years old. My dad was a school teacher who knew Joseph Pulitzer, who at the time owned Channel 5. They arranged a lease for the land Channel 5 owned on Higgy Road. I have a lot of memories from Tower T. My grandfather, dad, mom, myself, and others pulled bricks from the ground from an old brickyard that had been on the property, and we hauled them away in wheelbarrows. I've met celebrities, schoolteachers, plumbers, laborers, and lots of others, most of them golfers. I've been touched, even tonight, by the outpouring of affection and nostalgia for Tower T. As most of you know, the Loetz family never owned the land, but leased it from a variety of corporations through the years, the most recent being the Tegna Corporation. We were very fortunate over the years to get a below-market value lease from Tegna. As our lease was ending, Tegna decided that it was in their best interest to sell the property at market value. There was no feasible way that we could continue business by paying anywhere near market value. We also can't compete with the state-of-the-art facilities like Top Golf and the dozens of indoor batting and baseball instruction facilities throughout the area. McBride Homes in Barra is purchasing the property at fair market value. Our lease expired in November. McBride, Barra, and Tegna graciously allowed us to stay an extra six months into July, enabling us to serve the kids and adults of St. Louis with golf and baseball for another season. They also supported a concert with some top local talent, which we will hold on July the 8th. I could not be more pleased with the relationship that has developed with John Eilerman of McBride Homes and John Barra of the Barra Construction Company. They have worked with me and David Swaddick from our batting cages through this transition. So what's ahead now? I personally support a residential plan for Tower T. I saw a sign that says, "Keep Afton Family Friendly." Afton needs young families. The aging population of Afton is not bringing in new families, and I strongly believe to keep Afton family-friendly, we need to bring in young families to purchase these new homes. I think of the 150 or so families who will be moving into the arbors of Tower T. I hope they will receive the same friendly welcome my dad and grandpa got when they built Tower T in Afton 55 years ago. To those who live in Afton, I would say, be thankful that you live in a community where others want to live. As to the economic impact, Tower T paid Tegna approximately $15,000 a year for its share of the real estate taxes against the property. The forecast for the new development will bring in tax revenues of over $500,000 per year from a smaller footprint than Tower T serviced. That's good news for Afton schools and Afton first responders. I sincerely believe that residential development will have significantly less traffic than our business. As we've heard here tonight, between our three businesses, we've created a lot of traffic on Higgy Road. I know there are other concerns about drainage and the tower, but I'm fully confident that the county specifications and regulations will be followed. I will miss Tower T. It was part of our family for the last 50-plus years, but in the end, I think McBride and Barra have a plan that is great for Afton. I want to be clear, there's no saving Tower T.
Stephen, can you conclude your remarks?
Yes. I have three lines left. On July 10th, Tower T is closing its doors. I have no desire to keep it going. I will miss Tower T. I will miss the guests, but I'm moving on. For me and Janice, Tower T is over. My best to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joseph Hoffman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Hoffman, out of 6601 Higgy Road in Afton. I'm here to talk about the proposed rezoning of Tower T's property from commercial sports facility to RF5 residential.
Mr. Chair, could we ask the speaker to pull the microphone a little?
Yes.
My concern here is the overcrowding in Afton. St. Louis County, the population density is 1,669 persons per square mile. Afton is one of the most densely populated parts of the county. It's almost 4,500 people per square mile. Yes, the traffic there is rough, especially at rush hour. I mean, and I don't think Tower T gets that much at rush hour, it's spread throughout the day. But when you, like, in the morning rush hour, downward Higgy Road hits the Creed Station, the traffic will sometimes back up all the way up to the stop sign at Valcote, and the people who live in the houses on that end of Higgy Road, they can't get out of the driveways. And the roads on there, Pembroke, Marty's Lane, Aldershot, you know, those roads are block two for those periods of time. It's very hard for people to get out there. And Afton is still growing more rapidly anyway. McBride also has another development that they're building right now, 38 more homes right across the street from Afton High School, so that will add to the rush hour traffic that we have. And also, there's been, MSD has been down on New Hampshire Road behind where we live, right on the edge of Tower T, and people down there, apparently talking and said that it looks like, what they plan to do is, they actually want to tie in their 158 new houses into the into our existing 60-year-old sewer line, and that seems like a recipe for something bad. Sewage backups, sewage in people's basements, that would not be good. Finally, recently, down in Fenton, McBride had proposed rezoning some land from 20,000 square foot lots to 10,000 square foot lots. And the Fenton City Council voted them down, refused them. What they're asking for here in Afton is much more densely populated than that, it's only 6,000 square foot. And if Afton had its own city council, this wouldn't be happening, because their city council of Fenton was looking out for the interests of the people of Fenton. And we don't have a city council, we have you. And we ask you to please look on Afton as part of your community, and look out for what's good for us, and not rezone it to this high-density, single-family and rural house zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kira Braxton.
Good evening. This is a fitting night. We've been hearing Corrections Officers and Employee Recognition Week all week at work. And to see them here and you all supporting them just reminds us that, as I said in the very beginning of this journey of ours, six months ago, Justice Services is a department of one, not some. I just wanted to say thank you again for all of you all's hard work and support in our behalf. I really appreciate how the council and the county executive agrees on our raises. And we are looking forward to this night being a night of victory for us and seeing the bill 54 pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Burton.
Michael Burton, 8032 Pembroke, 63123. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Chairman. I don't know what just happened. The beginning of this whole thing, the gentleman that just spoke tried to save his business. He raised well over a million dollars from the Enterprise Corporation, from the Taylor family, to save his business. When I was in contact with him in 2017, he wanted to save his business. And this is a clear example of a giant corporation coming in and buying out a small business. And not only a small business, a small, family-friendly business with so much history. Okay? So what I just heard from him, I have a lot of questions about, because I know that was not his stance six months ago. But if you're going to lose your business and you have no choice, maybe you're getting a little something to put a happy face on it. Last week, you heard from some of the kids who enjoy Tower T, who learn life skills from Tower T. Please take their words into consideration. They are indeed our future. I can't tell you how many people come up to me when I wear shirts like this that say, "Are you kidding me? They want to get rid of Tower T? Tower T?" I walked into a restaurant two days ago with my mother. Before I was three feet in, somebody said, "Where's your paper? I want to sign it." Not 50-50, councilman. We have a petition going on right now, circulating. We haven't even put it online yet, and we have over, we have almost 1,000 signatures, okay? Not even online yet. Please tell you what you want from us. What can we do for you to believe that the majority of St. Louis citizens and Afton residents that are telling you that this is a bad idea? You've heard all of mine and the community's many safety concerns as well, and the potential loss of green space, and the loss of a beautiful place for our kids to enjoy. Please do not give up on us. We are counting on you. And we're not going anywhere. We're forming a 501(c)(3) that's almost complete, a nonprofit, and we're putting pressure on Channel Five to donate the land to our nonprofit organization to keep it going. We have a great team of people here. Steve Loetz is out of here because his wife, I believe, from what I was told, her parents are sick. My grandfather's in the hospital right now, I know what they're going through.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
We formed a 501(c)(3). We want Tegna to donate the land to our 501(c)(3). We want to bring kids in from the inner cities. We want to bring kids in with autism, older people with Alzheimer's, kids from all over Afton. We want to keep it going. Why? Because it's worth it. Look at what happened yesterday, so please. While Steve Loetz might not be a part of this anymore, and him talking about more traffic at Tower T than if there's 158 houses there is complete BS. As much BS as 50-50. Please, I'm begging you. It's worth it, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. It was sad to hear the passing of former county executive H. Milford last week. It said people run for office for one of two reasons. One, be something, or two, do something. H. Milford always wanted to do something. He was a likable person who did not have the pretensions often seen in public officials. It seems the county council is having a contest with the county executive to see who can break the sunshine law the most. So far, the county executive's office is winning, but not by much. It's difficult to understand why this is such a problem in county government. The Attorney General's office doesn't think the council violated the law in December when numerous bills cutting the proposed budget by $31 million were introduced shortly before the meeting. It was a rather contradictory opinion. Regardless of what the law says, it's a bad way to do business, which the council continues to do. Just last week, there was five add-ons to the agenda. Three were added just a few hours before the meeting. Also last week, substitute bill number two for bill 66 was not listed on the agenda, and the council's administrative director refused to make copies of the bill available. Councilwoman Walton Gray's office did send me a copy. Again, this is just not a good way to do business. I didn't understand the big hurry when final certification for the November ballot isn't until August 28th. You failed to give the proposal even the most basic scrutiny. Also, an election that drew national attention last week. Voters in Nashville defeated a big sales tax increase for a light rail system that would have put the city billions of dollars in debt. It seemed voters are getting tired of sales tax increases, and they're catching on that light rail systems are a bad way to go for public transit. St. Louis County has given about $150 million a year for public transit, which includes the billion-dollar MetroLink boondoggle right down the street, but this council continually fails to provide oversight for what is an incredible amount of tax dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Tom.
Next speaker is Kylie Reed.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Reed, and I'm a 14-year employee with the Department of Justice Services, and I'm speaking tonight in regards to bill number 54 that would give the 55 Justice Services employees the same pay increases that were given to the rest of the staff. Ms. Erby, we are so grateful for the unconditional support that you and the other council members have shown us since even before the 2018 budget was passed. And we know that it's not without your support and without our resolve that we would even be where we are with this matter today. And I wish Mr. Stinger was here, because I would like to tell him that we are truly thankful for his correspondence to the council last week and the support that he gave for the Justice Services increases. And if bill number 54 is passed tonight, we hope that he will uphold his commitment to the pay increases for these employees that were left out in Justice Services. We understand that he has the power of the charter to appropriate these funds sooner rather than later, and we would like him to use that power to make it right. It's been a long six months of debate, and we are eager to receive the fruits of these efforts, just as our coworkers have been enjoying their increases since January. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Thelma J. Hall-Gordon.
Good evening. I'd like to thank each and every one of you. I guess I should say who I am. I am Thelma Hall-Gordon. I am an 18-year veteran of corrections medicine, and I want to thank you all for all your due diligence and your desire to want to right a wrong and to go to work and put your heads together, some agreeing, some not, but still coming together for our benefit. And even though there's probably not a ton of people behind me, I know that they all will benefit from this. So thank you very much, and have a great evening.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Introduction bills.
Bill number 95, introduced by councilmember Erby and ordinance appropriating and setting apart $3,461.80 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and $4,057.16 from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund for payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Country Club Hills TIP redevelopment agreement authorized by ordinance number 23,277. Bill number 96, introduced by councilmember Dolan and ordinance appropriating and setting apart $123,471.45 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and $144,768.17 from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund for payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Gressel Plaza TIP redevelopment agreement authorized by ordinance number 21,822. Bill number 97, introduced by councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and setting apart $2,739.52 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Lee May Plaza TIP redevelopment agreement authorized by ordinance number 22,011. Bill number 98, introduced by councilmember Erby and ordinance appropriating and setting apart $37,280.77 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund and $42,319.22 from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund for payment of financial commitments incurred pursuant to the Northland Shopping Center TIP redevelopment agreement authorized by ordinance number 20,357. Bill number 99, introduced by councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Mitchell and Hugeback Architects Incorporated for architectural services related to construction of two new police precincts. Bill number 100, introduced by councilmember Page and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Me Climate Service LLC for HVAC/Refrigeration Services. Bill number 101, introduced by councilmember Tracus and ordinance amending ordinance number 14,682 as amended by repealing and reenacting section three pertaining to PC 94-89, Mark W. Toler. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection bills.
Bill number 44, introduced by councilmember Erby for councilmember Page.
Move to hold, bill number 44. We're still working on some questions. Bill 44, held.
Bill number 85, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill 85. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 85 is perfected.
Bill number 86, introduced by councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 86.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Bill number 87, introduced by councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect, bill number 87.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 87 is perfected.
Bill number 88, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 88.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 88 is perfected.
Bill number 89, introduced by councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect, bill number 89.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 89 is perfected.
Bill number 90, introduced by councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect, bill number 90.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 90 is perfected.
Bill number 91, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to hold, bill number 91. We're still studying this topic. Bill number 91 will be held.
Bill number 92, introduced by councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect, bill number 92.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 92 is perfected.
Bill number 93, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 93.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 93 is perfected.
Bill number 94, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 94.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, bill number 94 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 305, introduced by councilmember Harder.
I move to hold, bill number 305.
Bill number 305 is held.
Bill number 353, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to hold, bill number 353, and 353 will be held.
Bill number 54, introduced by councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of bill number 54.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
I'd just like, again, appreciate everything that's been done for this bill, and I agree 100% with the raises. And I was hoping we could separate the nurses to the health department, because I agree with the nurses getting the raise as well, as I've said all along. But hearing that there could be some conflict and this might not go through if it goes this way, or maybe the Justice Service workers could get the raise and that, either way, it's just not clear to me that they're going to, how this is going to go. So I'm a favorite of raises, just in a different aspect, through the health department and through Justice Services, through Prop P. So unfortunately, I'm going to vote no, just because I think there's a way to do this differently.
Councilmember Tracus?
A resounding aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 54, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number 54 is finally passed.
Bill number 74, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, bill number 74.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 74, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 74 is finally passed.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 78, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of substitute bill number two for bill number 78.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Again, like last week and the weeks before, I agree totally with campaign finance reform. I have no problem whatsoever with that, but some of the other things that are added in this bill, I just don't agree with, so it's already passed anyway, but I just wanted to make that explanation that I'll vote no.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on substitute bill number two for bill number 78, there are six ayes and one no.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 78 is finally passed.
Bill number 79, introduced by councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 79.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 79, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 79 is finally passed.
Bill number 80, introduced by councilmember Page.
Before I move final passage, I'd just like to recognize that this is a grant for $133,000. Thought it was less than that, but it's $133,000 for a food service program for children in the summer. for a food service program for children in the summer. We appreciate getting this grant contract in May. Last year, we got it in August after the program was underway. But moving forward, I would expect to see a distribution table of grants attached to the ordinances, so we can see how the grant is being distributed. And I don't want to hold up the food service program for the kids, so I'm willing to move this forward unless there's other objections from other council members. So I'll move for final passage of bill number eighty.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number eighty, there are seven ayes.
Bill number eighty is finally passed.
Bill number eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number eighty-one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number eighty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number eighty-one is finally passed.
Bill number eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
This is another large grant that goes into some deal detail, but not enough, on how the money will be distributed. And again, moving forward on these grant requests, we will expect to see a distribution table attached to the ordinance, and we'll try to process these grants in this manner first, while we look at other methods of making sure that the council understands how this grant money is appropriated. I move for final passage of bill number eighty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number eighty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number eighty-two is finally passed.
Bill number eighty-three, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan and Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number eighty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number eighty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number eighty-three is finally passed.
Bill number eighty-four, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number eighty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number eighty-four, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number eighty-four is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, we have one this evening, Mr. Chair. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair. Item number one.
Hold on the order of business. Item number one, same motion for item two and three, and that will be the order.
Item number four, third district. Hold on the order of business, please.
Still ordered.
Item number five.
Our receipt file and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number six, second district.
New liquor license be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.